Good evening, councillors, officers, members of the public in attendance and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting. My name is councillor Suzanne Newton, I'm the Mayor of Darabin City Council and the Chairperson of tonight's special council meeting. It's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's special council meeting and I declare the meeting open at 6:34pm. This meeting is a hybrid meeting, so I welcome councillor Williams, councillor Messina and councillor Hannan who are attending online. The meeting is being livestreamed and a recording will be made available on the council website as soon as practicable after the meeting. The meeting has been called to consider nine officer reports as listed in the agenda. Pursuant to section 1.136 of the governance rules, unless all councillors present and unanimously agree to deal with another matter, only the business specified in the notice calling the meeting is to be transacted. Any discussions relating to confidential information under section 3.1 of the Local Government Act 2020 will require council to move into camera pursuant to section 66.2. Councillors, if you're online, please leave your video on and mute your sound unless you wish to speak. If you do wish to speak or ask a question, please raise your hand and leave it raised until you have my attention. When voting, please leave your hand raised until I've called the vote and note there's no chat facility in the Zoom. And I will start the meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners and I acknowledge the Warren Dray Weywaring people as the traditional owners of this land and I pay my respects to elders past and present and I recognise their continuing connection to land, water and culture. Personally, I also share my support for Treaty in Victoria. Before we commence, I'd like to introduce councillors and senior staff who are with us this evening. We don't have councillor Lawrence as yet, I've got councillor Dimitri Artis, councillor Greco, councillor Tom Hannan online, we've got councillor Trent McCarthy, councillor Liam Messina online, councillor Susan Reddy and councillor Julie Williams. Our officers in attendance tonight are Peter Smith, our CEO, Kylie Bennetts, General Manager of Community, Enid Jam Piccolo, the Acting General Manager Customer and Corporate, Rachel Olivier, the General Manager Infrastructure Operations and Finance, Vanessa Petrie, the General Manager of City Sustainability and Strategy, Felicity Walsh, the Inter Manager Governance and Communications, and Anthony Smith, our governance advisor. And I'd also like to welcome our municipal monitors who are with us tonight, June Anstey and Ross Millard. I've received no apologies for tonight, but our first, our next greater disclosure of conflict of interest, councillors and/or officers, have you got any conflicts of interest or interest to declare? Councillor McCarthy.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be declaring a conflict of interest in relation to item 5.1, which relates to Wingrove Street, Elphington.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy, I'll get you to step out at that time. Have I got any councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be declaring a conflict of interest in relation to item number seven.
Thank you, and Vanessa?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll declare a conflict of interest for item 5.1 and also item 5.3 and I have previously disclosed these conflicts to the CEO.
Thank you. And if anything comes up in the meeting that arises a conflict, please just do raise your hand and let me know. So I'll go on to, oh sorry, Mr Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll declare a general conflict of interest in relation to 7.1, CEO Performance Review.
Thank you. And we'll go on to council's occupational health and safety responsibilities. Council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to ensure everyone attending tonight's meeting feels safe, both physically and emotionally. It's great to see everyone here this evening and I'd like to remind everyone in attendance to please be respectful of each other and as outlined in our governance rules, please note the following. One, a councillor or any other person who addresses a meeting must do so in a courteous and respectful manner and must take direction from the chairperson whenever called on to do so. Any member of the public physically attending a meeting must not utter any offensive, indecent, insulting or objectional items or words, including words that are racist, sexist or homophobic, or interject or gesticulate offensively in the council chamber. Silence must be preserved in the gallery at all times during a meeting, other than by a person in the gallery who's invited to address the meeting. If any member of the public does engage in conduct that is improper or disorderly, the chairperson may direct that person to cease their conduct and the person must comply with that direction. Councillors, I will be permitting questions of officers prior to the commencement of debate on each item and if I think sufficient questioning has occurred, I'll exercise my right under the governance rules to limit questions and ask the debate to commence. The first report we, I'll go to consideration of reports, number five, the first report we have to consider this evening is to Wingrove Street and councillor McCarthy, I'll ask you to exit the chamber before we discuss this item.
Thanks, Mayor. Just before I do, I'll just restate the conflict of interest and the nature of the interest. The interest is a material conflict of interest in relation to my employer, which has interests in some of the organisations.
Thank you. We'll just pause while you leave the chamber. Okay, so the first report we have to consider this evening is 5.1, expression of interest submissions received on building 1D and the hot house at 2 Wingrove Street, Elphington. Councillors, do we have questions of the officers on this item? Councillor Hannan, you've got your hand up.
Mayor, thank you. Not a question, but I'd like to move a procedural motion that we actually address this matter later in the agenda and that it goes to just after urgent business.
Thank you. That's a procedural motion to move this item 5.1 to just before urgent business. Do we have a second for that procedural motion? Councillor Reddy? Okay, it's a procedural motion, so we'll go straight to the vote for that one. All those in favour? That's councillor Reddy, councillor Hannan, councillor Williams, councillor Messina. Councillor Greco, are you voting? No? Okay, thank you. And all those against? Councillor Greco? All those abstaining? Councillor Dimitri Artis? So that procedural motion has passed, so I'll just ask that we get councillor McCarthy back in the chamber, please. Welcome councillor Lawrence. We've just deferred 5.1 to be just ahead of urgent business and we're just waiting for councillor McCarthy to return. Thank you, councillors. So the next report we have to consider this evening is 5.2. This is Destination High Street, vibrant, safe, accessible. Council's advocacy submission to the Route 86 tram project. Councillors, do we have questions of the officers on this item? Last call for questions? No, okay. Councillors, if there are no further questions, we'll commence the debate and I remind you once we enter the debate, oh sorry, councillor Messina, did you have a question?
Through you, Mayor. It's in relation to the 86 tram, just in relation to this particular project. Moving forward, the 86 tram has had some contentious issues around the Tyler Street entrance. That is, I just want to elevate that that is a separate issue to what's been put in the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. Is that a question to officers, councillor Messina, or is that a statement?
No, more a statement.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions before I move to debate? No, okay. Councillors, if there are no further questions, we'll commence debate and I remind you, once we enter the debate, there'll be no further questions. And noting that we have an amended officer recommendation on this item, do we have a mover for the amended officer recommendation or another motion? Councillor Reddy, to move the officers' recommendation?
Sure.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Oh, councillor Hannan, did you want a second to that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, I saw your hand first. So I'll go to councillor Reddy to speak to this item, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it brief because I don't have a lot of voice at the moment. It's really exciting that we are contemplating improvements to this tram corridor to make the tram stops accessible. We've seen how fabulous it was to do this in the lower half of High Street, south of Separation Street, and it's going to be such a big improvement, I think, to both the streetscape and in terms of accessibility for people who are able to access the tram from raised platforms. In undertaking this work, it's vitally important that improvements to the public realm are considered and that's why it's really important for council to have this advocacy position that notes all the different road and footpath users and thinks about how we maximise and enhance the public benefits to occur from this programme. I really thank the staff for their work.
Thank you, councillor Reddy. And just noting, if anyone is feeling unwell, please just, if you don't want to stand or anything like that, that's fine, just let me know. Councillor Hannan, I'll go to you as second.
I'll resume my right. Thanks, Mayor.
Sure. Have we got any further speakers? Councillor Greco, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Newton. I had a little amendment that I'd like to include in the substantive motion. If the officers could bring up the amendment.
Thank you. Is that your amendment?
So it's the inclusion of an additional point, I think from this distance, it's point number C, there in red, which is basically asking the state government to give us a timeline on the implementation of the project.
Thank you. Is that acceptable to the mover and the second?
Sure.
Thank you. Councillor Hannan, is that acceptable to your second? Thank you. That's now been incorporated, so that now becomes a substantive item. Councillor Lawrence, did you want to speak to the item?
Yes. Some of us can't see the amendment.
Oh, you can't see the amendment, sorry. I'll read it and it has been incorporated now, councillor Messina, so it now forms the substantive motion and it says, C, request the state government provides council with a timeline on implementation of the new Route 86 High Street tram stops. And I'll go to councillor Lawrence.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Newton. Yes, look, I'm standing to support this proposal with the amendment from councillor Greco about more details. And obviously, you know, having two tram lines and two train lines through the, particularly the southern part of the city, makes it a destination to live here. So it was a great asset we've got. Now, this, we have got this in process, it is a formal process, it's got its state budget funding and it's both on this council website and on the state government website. But it would be remiss of me not to mention a lot of community feedback that remains and has been in this chamber in the form of an organised petition in regards to the lack of action from Dundas Street through to, well, wherever, Bundura, Latrobe Uni in particular. We have got state action about great expansion of the 86 above Latrobe Uni and we've got a great concentration in the marginal parts below Dundas Street, but the part that actually needs the major upgrade and is the part that's earmarked for the greatest population explosion we've seen in Darabin is actually Preston and Reservoir. In particular, it was mentioned Tyler Street tram stop, the outgoing Tyler Street tram stop was removed, the incoming one's still there, you basically put a blow into that Plenty Road traders area and we have got a large petition, I think, active in this council from the community on that. To give people some idea, the loss of stops on Tyler Street creates a gap that would fit about four stops in Thornbury.
It's time, councillor Lawrence.
So I think that just has to be noted.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. And yes, I know there has been particular advocacy for the Tyler Street tram stop, I believe it's one of the longest gaps now between tram stops. Have we got further speakers to this item? Councillor McCarthy, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. It's quite interesting that this is now back on the agenda. I can recall, in fact, just before joining council in 2008, which is almost 16 years ago, that we were talking about the Route 86 project, which was a collaborative piece of work by the then state government and council and of course, the High Street Traders Association in Northkitt. And why I mention that was because the opportunity at that point in time was actually to bring the first accessible tram stops to High Street. And one of the reasons why this was so important to this council at the time, and I hope it continues in council's advocacy for many years to come, was the fact that everyone should have the right to be able to get on a tram. It seems like a simple thing, but the Disability Discrimination Act does guarantee and does require governments of all complexions and both state and federal and local, as from my recollection, at both levels, the Disability Discrimination Acts and relevant legislation really demand that we make those modifications to our infrastructure and our practices to ensure this. So this is part of that journey. But in doing so, one of the considerations at the time, and I thank our officers for their work in building a really strong advocacy document here, is to ensure that in that infrastructure also ensures that we have safe travel routes for pedestrians, for cyclists and other road users along the High Street corridor, because we know that High Street is accessed by a range of people at various points. Some people travel the entire length and some people travel particular sections and they get off and on from different side streets and we want to make sure that everyone's safe, that we can actually have the multimodal corridor that we love and enjoy, but actually make it better. So I just want to highlight a couple of things and one of those things is actually the cycling priority here, Mayor, and also the engagement with traders. So I'll end it there and I just want to thank our officers for their work on this advocacy document. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Have I got further speakers on the item? Councillor Dimitri Artis, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say this is a great project and I'm really excited that council's actually going to be working with the state government who recently released the draft tram 86 corridor plan for accessible tram stops to be constructed that would be suitable down the corridor of Northkitt and Thornbury. I look forward to the outcome, I think it's going to be great, it's much needed and I hope that in the future we can do more projects like these because when we do work together with all levels of government, we produce great outcomes for the community, which are much needed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dimitri Artis. Have we got any further speakers to the item? Councillor Williams, go ahead.
Very much looking forward to the outcome. It's been a very, very long journey getting to this point. We've been pushed back for a number of years to hold back, but this council's been fighting a really good fight to ensure that we do incur and make sure that all our residents are able to have accessibility to transport. And it means mothers with prams, people with walkers, people with scooters are able to get on a tram without feeling further discriminated. And as we know, we're expecting another 30,000 or so people coming into the population of Darabin, particularly north of Bell Street. I hope that it's not too far off that they do consider north of Bell Street and not just only the south of Bell Street, because we do have a huge growing population and with the announcement just recently saying that the amount of people that will be coming and the build that they want to build within Darabin for housing, we need to ensure that that infrastructure is able to take the new growing population. And also the mention of Tyler Street, Tyler Street should have been number one in front of all this. Tyler Street was taken away, that tram stop, not only because it's just a normal tram stop, it's not. Oak Hill and Tyler Street is one of the highest point and hilliest and is now the longest from one point of Wood Street down to the Rocham Rock, which is one of the longest or is the now longest tram stops in between. There's, it must be at least a 15, 20 minute walk and that's just for a normal person. Could you imagine somebody with a disability? So it does discriminate by not having the Tyler Street tram stop reinstated and I hope that it is reinstated ASAP.
Thank you, councillor Williams, well said and I agree, I hope that we can continue to advocate on Tyler Street as well. Councillor Messina, did you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo what my fellow councillors have said first and foremost. Secondly, we know that what we're proposing here and what we're advocating for is a sense of social connection, place making, where we should be looking more of that throughout our municipality. We know it creates a sense of wellbeing, we know that it creates a sense of community and I look forward to more of this rolling out. But like councillor William says and councillor Lawrence has been stating, we need some action on the Tyler Street tram right there at the junction. It is dangerous and I look forward to some action in relation to that particular precinct in the future.
Thank you, councillor Messina. Councillor Greco, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Newton. I'd like just to say a few words in relation to this. One is in relation to the amendment and I thank the mover and the second for accepting that. It's important that we get the timelines on the implementation. Why is that important? It's important because if we get an indication of when the timelines of implementation are going to occur, then it'll put us in a better position to advocate for further works basically north of Bell Street. We know that this project has started many years ago, as councillor McCarthy has said, it's moving from Westgarth Street up along the spine of High Street, but we really need to get this project moving right up into north of Bell Street. So the sooner we know when it's going to be implemented and then we could put a lot of council effort in terms of advocacy to extend it further beyond that. I think it's an important initiative, we've seen how popular and how useful the super stops are. It's also consolidated the number of stops, it's also increased the speed of the tram and in terms of its timeliness along High Street. So it's an important initiative that has been rolled out, not only here in Darabin, but across the metropolitan area. And also just a final point to make and other councillors have picked up on this, we're going to see a population density increase, particularly around the Preston and northern areas of our city and that's why it's important that we look not in relation to the project that's about to occur now, but in relation to the future projects. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. I'll go back to councillor Hannan as second and then I'll close off the debate.
Nothing to add, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hannan. So just a couple of points from me. I am supportive of this advocacy position, but I know that funding has not been allocated yet, so I really do hope that we can push this in the right direction. For me, something that's really important about this project is sustainable transport. As an e-bike user, I often go to High Street for all sorts of different reasons and even if I'm coming from east-west, I do end up on High Street and it certainly makes a big difference once I can be near one of those sustainable tram stops, I feel quite safe riding. But what I think is really fantastic about the advocacy position is that this does leave room for if council in the future wants to do separated bike lanes on High Street, I think that's a really strong part of the advocacy position that's very important. The other part that I think is really fantastic is the ask for business support. We know how disruptive these projects can be and I think that's a very, very important ask for council. But we also know that the state government has been a little bit slow with signing off these accessible tram stops, so I really hope that our advocacy position can push them forward. Thank you. We'll close off the debate there and councillors, I will put the item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's carried unanimously. Thank you. So we will go on to 5.3, the Thornbury High School kindergarten on school site lease. Councillors, do you have questions of the officers on this item? And Vanessa, I'll just wait for you to leave the chamber. Thanks. Take your time. Thank you. So we'll go back to 5.3. Councillors, do you have questions for officers? Councillor Greco? What's your question?
Sorry, Mayor, I don't have a question.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? No, okay. Councillors, I'll ask for a mover. Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Newton. I have an alternative motion to put forward and if it could be placed on the screen for all of us to see.
Sure.
Through you, Mayor. Councillor Greco, I think we had two versions, was it option one or option two you wanted on the screen?
It would be option two.
We'll just put it up and check with you if we may. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this your alternate motion, councillor Greco?
Yes, that's correct, thank you.
Thank you. And do we have questions now that we have an alternate motion on the screen?
Is there a possibility to enlarge it?
Probably. I can read it out, so it's an alternate motion that councillor Grayson Prince wore to accept Department of Education's offer to take on the lease pending, I assume it's Department of Education's response to council's request to vary the standard terms of the lease in favour of council so it can achieve an outcome closer to...
Cost neutral should be, I just got up.
Oh, sorry. Cost neutral position and minimise as much as possible maintenance costs over the life of the agreement and initial establishment costs, including fit out and leasing costs. And two, request a further report be brought back to council providing an outcome of the discussion with the Department of Education for council to resolve its final position. Do we have any further questions of clarification? Councillor Reddy?
Mayor, if I might ask the staff for possible financial implications of this?
Thank you. Can we get a response from officers on the financial implications of the alternate motion?
Through you, Mayor. It would be difficult to provide a financial estimation given that we're talking about closer to cost neutral and as much as possible, we would need to come back to you with clarification once we had further information about what was being proposed.
Thank you, councillor Reddy.
Yes, thank you. I might ask then if the Department of Education did not budge from their position, what would the cost implications be?
Thank you. Jo and Tim?
The ongoing maintenance cycle over the 20 years is estimated at 1.25 million. The initial setup costs are approximately $120,000, which would need to come out of the 23, 24 budget or, oh sorry, 24, 25 budget, apologies, thank you. And there would be other start-up costs as well as staff resourcing that we would need to find resources for.
Thank you. Any further questions, councillor Reddy? I've got one, Jo, about how would this alternate motion affect our ability to negotiate?
Through you, Mayor. It would be providing the in-principle agreement upfront, which hasn't been put to the department at this stage, so it alters obviously the conversation, would be my advice.
Thank you. And I've got a question for governance, would this be considered opposite to the officer's recommendation?
Through you, Mayor. I think it's an alternative motion, so it doesn't need to meet that, but we'll check with governance, is that correct, Anthony? It's not, it's not an amendment, so it's an alternative motion.
Thank you. Councillor McCarthy, did you have a question?
I think councillor Hannan was before me, Mayor.
Sorry, I didn't look at the screen. Councillor Hannan, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a question, having seen this amendment just now. I just wanted to ask, has there been any update in discussions with Department of Education since we, since our last meeting on 27th of May on this topic?
Thank you. Jo?
Through you, Mayor. Following the last council meeting, I reached out to the Department of Education and provided them with the resolution from that meeting. We were requested to meet on, two days later, on the 29th of May and we made that appointment and made that time with them. I wrote formally to them on the following day so that they had our proposal in writing or our request in writing and that was on the 30th of May. They were to get back to us early the following week and I followed up again during that week asking for an update and I haven't had any response since then. And I haven't had any response since then.
Thank you, Jo. I'll go to councillor Greco, then I'll go to councillor McCarthy.
Just through you, Mayor. A question. I understand that the last contact that was made with the Department of Education was on May the 29th. My understanding is that the Department of Education made contact with us, or I'm not really sure whether we made contact with the Department of Education. That was after our council meeting. And I was just wondering whether we've sought to make any contact with the Department of Education since then.
Okay. Jo, do you want to answer that?
Through you, Mayor. Yes, confirming. The department and I had an email exchange following the council meeting, which was on the 27th of May. We had an email exchange on the 29th of May. We were asked on the 29th of May whether we were able to meet. Officers could meet with them that day. And officers did, myself and the general manager of community. We met that afternoon. As a matter of priority, the following day, I sent an email outlining, on behalf of council, the position and what we were seeking to negotiate. And that was on the 30th of May. I then, not having had any response to that email and not having any further follow-up at that time, I then made a phone call to the relevant officer and left a message on the 3rd of June. And I haven't heard anything since then.
Thank you. I'll go to councillor McCarthy.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm just trying to understand procedurally what would happen if this motion were to pass and the proposed opposition not be accepted by the Department of Education, which hasn't, as I understand, been put on the table at this stage. I'm always concerned about motions that are vague or difficult to implement. Can I ask if the Department of Education, if this was to be accepted and the Department of Education was to not agree with this proposal, would the matter then have to come back to council to formulate a new position? Are we effectively doing the negotiation in and out of this chamber? How would officers proceed in that instance?
Thank you. Jo, did you want to take that one?
Through you, Mayor. Point two indicates that we would be, officers would be bringing back a report following the discussion with the Department of Education for council to resolve its final position.
Thank you. Kylie, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, just in terms of timelines. Timelines are really important in terms of making sure that there's a provider ready to go as close as possible to the first, on the first day of the first term in 2025. Obviously, I'm very sure that would be council's interest in intent and certainly the state government's as well. So in terms of decision-making, whichever way council chooses to resolve, that time consideration needs to be considered.
Thank you. Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you for clarifying. That was probably going to be where I was going in terms of the cycle that we are in. In that case, if I'm correct, would that, this matter have to come back to council? If this was to be successful tonight, would this matter have to come back to council prior to council entering the caretaker period, which I believe is late September? And can council resolve in relation to a matter like this during the caretaker period?
Through you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll go to Kylie.
I don't think this would be something you could consider in caretaker, but I'd need to take some advice on that. Certainly, in terms of any financial implications of this decision, we would bring that back into the chamber so that you could consider that and reprioritise your budget accordingly, particularly for 24-25. In terms of the outcome of any expression of interest process, and councils wish to be involved in that, if you do decide to take up the sublease, if you wanted that to come back to you, that expression of interest process would need to be run and brought back to you before going to caretaker. If it came to the new council, it's probably cutting it very, very fine to have that ready for opening on day one of term one. Could certainly come to the new council, but there may be a delay in a provider starting.
Thank you, Kylie. Do we, I think we'll just about close questions there. There's just one I wanted to be 100% clear of before we go to debate. Can I double-check, Jo, the financial implications of if this alternative motion was supported?
Through you, Mayor. We wouldn't be able to give you a definitive answer on what the financial implications of this motion would be.
Thank you. Councillors, we will move to debate. I don't think I asked for a second on this item. So do we have a second for this alternate motion? Councillor Dimitris. Councillor Greco, I'll go to you for moving the motion.
Thank you, Mayor Newton. I'll just make a couple of points in relation to this because we discussed this at the last meeting. Look, it's a great opportunity what's being presented to us. Why is that? Because there is a substantive difference between a community-managed childcare centre to that of a not-for-profit or privately-run centre. What is the substantive difference? Well, we know that a community-run centre is more in line with council values of involving parents, involving the community in how they self-manage and self-run their lives and their activities. Also, it's been noted in the sector that it's probably one of the best models, community models, because what it does is that it empowers parents and also it ensures that children and parents are at the centre of both the administration and the outcomes of running these types of centres. Also, it should be noted that community-run centres have a higher quality of service relative to not-for-profit centres and for-profit centres in general. And that's why a lot of the community-run centres have exceeding as their rating, which is a national accreditation and rating system. And community-run centres actually exceed way beyond other forms of models. Also, I think it's important, again, going back to the values of council, that having a community-run centre and being part of, if you like, the stock of centres that we have in the city of Darabben. We have, I believe, 17 or 18 of them. It gives council greater leverage in relation to ensuring that we can, for council to achieve social equity outcomes. And that's really important because, in a way, we have bargaining power with a community-run centre and we're able to actually ensure that the outcomes meet our social equity objectives as part of the city, which is a fundamental part of our value statement in relation to our council plan. And finally, a lot of the questions were around whether we can achieve this or not. I think we really need to explore to the nth degree with the state government. We haven't had a final response from them, as has been mentioned by our officers. It's only been a couple of weeks. And I think what we should do is get that response from the state government, see how close we can come to being cost-neutral. And only when we get that information, we can make a decision, an evidence-based decision, rather than just ruling it out point-blank without hearing from the state government in regards to their final position. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. I'd just like to clarify that there's no guarantee that it would be community-run. I'll go to the second, councillor Dimitris.
I'll reserve my right. Thanks.
Thank you. Have we got further speakers to this item? Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to speak against this motion. I think the substantive motion that's listed in the report is completely fine as it is, and it actually provides a higher level of certainty for all parties and a clearer pathway to a decision in relation to this matter. I just want to point out as well, and I think councillors would know this when they've read the report, as outlined under the background information, should council not take up the opportunity, because in the case of where it can't achieve the outcomes that it's seeking, there is the option for the Department of Education to put the management of this facility to a not-for-profit early-year service provider or even the school council at Thornbury High School. And I just want to point out that that is not an unusual set of arrangements. In fact, it is quite common for schools to consider this as part of their suite of offerings because it enables them to deliver a much broader suite of service to their local community. So I really want to reject the idea that council's substantive position, or the position outlined, I should say, in the report, negates the opportunity for what we might consider as a more community-oriented approach. Because in fact, we have the report right there and it says very clearly, the motion we have in front of us right now raises a number of risks. One of those is financial, and it's clear from the responses to the questions this evening that we can't even tell you how much this would cost because there is a price tag associated with the potential long-term cost. But there's actually no clarity around how we would fund this in the short term, should it proceed as proposed. The second question is that it creates a great level of uncertainty for the Department of Education. It actually potentially disrupts the process of finding the right provider and puts this council in a really difficult position should the terms as outlined on the screen not be agreeable with the department. So I'm asking councillors to vote down this motion. Let's go for certainty and let's go with the substantive motion.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Can I check your foreshadowing that you would put forward the officer's recommendation if this fails?
I would. I think that was implied, Mayor, but I'm happy to be clear about that.
Thank you. Just governance-wise, it's good to just make that very clear. Thank you, councillor McCarthy. And do we have further speakers to this item? Checking for any further speakers. Okay, councillor Dimitris, I'll go back to you as second.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you. I'd just like to say that this alternate motion is about just waiting for the state government to give us a reply on the conditions that we've provided to them to actually get this lease sorted. So I think it's been from calculations about three weeks of what we've heard that we wrote to the department and that waiting another week or two shouldn't necessarily be a big concern. I personally think that this is a great project and it's important for the community. And I believe council should be taking on projects such as these where possible because it has massive community benefits. Given that the council has technically put an ultimatum to the Department of Education to say that these terms of being cost-neutral should be pretty much approved. Otherwise, we won't enter the lease. I think it's just common courtesy to just wait for a response for that. And so I am supporting this motion on that basis.
Thank you, councillor Dimitris. I'll close off the debate to say that I am against this motion and I will... Oh, sorry. Councillor Greco, let me just double-check that if it's an alternate. I think you do. Hang on. You do. Go ahead, councillor Greco, and then I'll close the debate.
Thank you, Mayor Newton. Just in terms of some of the points that were made by councillor McCarthy. The substantive motion that if this goes down, that we're going to consider, is basically an accounting exercise. Look, I'm an accountant, you know. I've worked as an accountant all my life. But when we're dealing with childcare centres, when we're dealing with parents, when we're dealing with children, it's not purely an accounting exercise. There are other values associated with these particular services. Look, I'm very conscious of the financial position that council is in. But at the same time, we have to understand why we are here as a council. We're here as a council to serve the community. If you stretch over 20 years and if you do have some quick sums on the back of an envelope, it's about $60,000 extra a year in order to take on a community-run centre. So that's important to consider, councillors, you know. Don't just put on your financial hat and look at this just from an economic rationalist perspective. Think a little bit more progressively and a bit more broadly about what the social benefits of what can be done. The other point, I think, is that councillors tonight have to make a decision. Do we want to empower our parents and the children in early child education? Or do we want to sort of say no to that and let it go to either a not-for-profit provider or a for-profit provider? And the final point that I would make, I think it's a bit of a misrepresentation on the part of councillor McCarthy saying that there are other examples of community-run centres. I don't know one in the city of Darabben, apart from the 18 that we have that are community-run, which are supported by council. All the others that I'm aware of are either for-profit or not-for-profit. And in many other municipalities and many other places, I don't know of any model that is community-run that does not have the support of councils. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. I'll close off the debate by adding that I'm against this alternative motion. So there is an economic reality here where we're talking about over $1 million in long-term cost if we were to go with this. We have childcare deserts in Darabben, and it's not in this area of Darabben, it's in the north in Reservoir. So for me, it's quite an easy decision not to support this. And I think the timing implications are significant when we've heard from officers that this needs to open as soon as possible in 2025. So we'll close the debate there. And councillors, I'll go to put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Dimitris and councillor Greco, all those against. Councillor Reni, councillor McCarthy, councillor Nusinah, councillor Messina, councillor Williams, councillor Hannan, and all those abstaining. Councillor Lawrence, that motion is lost. Councillor McCarthy, you foreshadowed the officer's recommendation. Would you like to put that forward?
I'm happy to move that, Mayor.
Thank you. Have we got a second, councillor Reni? Councillor McCarthy, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to thank our officers for preparing this report and for their ongoing work in relation to this matter. And I acknowledge that they've done some great work in seeking to find an outcome that, as outlined in the report, sought to minimise the financial risk to council should council seek to take on the leasing arrangements in relation to this proposal. Unfortunately, there hasn't been an acceptable response at this stage from the Department of Education. And therefore, we are left in the situation where we need to provide both certainty in our setting and also certainty, I think also, to the other party being the department. I'm hopeful, and should this motion pass, confident that the good people working on this project from all sides, both council and the department, and of course, also the school itself, which is going to play host to this wonderful facility, will do everything that they can to ensure that there is a great provider in place here. But that doesn't have to be council holding a lease and then contracting a service out when in fact, it could be another organisation, whether it's the school council, whether it's a not-for-profit provider or some other organisation that the Department of Education chooses to appoint. And I think we need to have a little bit more faith in the department's role in this. And I would reject some of the comments that were made in the previous debate that give implications otherwise. We have a strong ongoing partnership with the department. And I think it's really important that councillors are wary of how we speak about what is important to us and what's important to them, because I think we share a lot more in common. So I just encourage councillors to keep a focus there. But importantly, what this motion does is that it provides a really clear rationale as to why council is not in a position to accept the lease offer. And that's all it is, is a first offer, which then enables the department to go effectively to a broader range of options should they be interested. As councillors would note, and under section eight of the motion, it states out very clearly why council would not proceed with this opportunity at this stage. And also outlines the process that council has gone through. I'd like to finish off, Mayor, by thanking again our officers for their work. Also congratulate the local member for her advocacy in relation to this programme and also Northgate High School as well for, so Thornbury High School, I should say, for their success in being a host. And I think it's a great example, and we see this at some of our primary school sites. Westgarth Primary is another example, which plays host to a kindergarten on-site. It's a great model to support families that have kids at different age groups and also to connect our kindergartens with our secondary and primary school settings as well. So I'll end it there, Mayor, and just thank again our officers, but also encourage all councillors to get behind the substantive motion before us. And let's give a clear position to the department. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Reddy, would you like to speak a second?
I'll reserve, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Newton. Yes, I'd like to speak in favour of this motion. Now, I came to this debate quite happy to hear a last-minute email and listen to some arguments regarding an evidence base. And obviously, you know, council is heavily involved in the provision of facilities for childcare and for kindergartens. But so also is the state government, and so also is education facilities, and so also is the Catholic Church and other churches throughout the city. And I'm happy to show councillor Greco a few hundred metres away non-council, community-run kindergartens. So they are available through faith organisations as well. So we are talking about something that's a great kind of project that we go into council. It's lovely to go and spend $1.2 million and get another childcare facility going in Thornbury. But I can't agree to additional building maintenance costs, which this council has a legacy issue of actually 70 years of cost shifting from state governments to Preston and Reservoir. I'm happy to detail them. I remember most of them. Now, we're taking on a building maintenance area, and we have yet to meet the demand and the future demand in Reservoir and Preston and Kingsbury for kindergartens or childcare, yet. Last big bunch of money we actually got from a liberal state government, $1.5 million, we built the wonderful Keon Park Children's Hub there. We don't get that value for money. We don't see $10 million grants above Dundas Street. We don't see federal grants, haven't seen them for decades.
It's time, councillor Lawrence.
You know, we need to focus on needs-based for the whole city, and we need to actually improve equity if we're going to start giving subsidies out.
Thank you. I'll call for further speakers. Councillor Greco, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Newton. Look, I'll be speaking against this motion. And I'll be speaking against this motion because I don't believe that council is actually meeting its obligations to providing quality, community-run childcare centres when we've been given the opportunity to do that. Also, I'd be voting against this motion because we haven't fully explored the response from the Department of Education. It's been three weeks since we haven't heard from them. And I think if we are going to make decisions based on evidence-based decisions, well, let's hear first what the state government and the Department of Education have to say, and then we're in a better position to make a decision with the full information before us. I believe that this motion is abandoning our obligation to supporting parents and children in our city. Why is that? Because we know that the community-based model, to repeat, is a model that works, is a model that produces quality early childhood education. And we know that early child education is one of the most important issues on the national agenda in terms of giving children and young children the best opportunity in life. And also, I'll just finally say, is that by not taking up this opportunity and exploring how we can negotiate the costs, I'm not sure what sort of message we are sending to the existing community-run centres. Because what are we saying? Are we saying that we're no longer interested in increasing the stock of community-run centres? And that we've given away the opportunity of actually introducing more community-run centres in our city? Therefore, look, I urge councillors not to support this motion, and let's sit down with the state government, Department of Education, and see what deal and arrangements we can come up with. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. That's time. Have I got further speakers to the item? Councillor Demetriades, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I also rise to vote against this recommendation for a number of reasons that I also stated in last month's meeting. Firstly, council's job, broadly speaking, is to provide services for the community and expend money for community benefits. At a time when the demand for community-managed not-for-profit kindergarten services is at an all-time high, and community-managed kindergartens are well sought after, I believe we should be embracing this project with open arms rather than rejecting it, because it has significant community benefits. These new kindergartens, as was stated in the report last month, are a cost-effective way for council to meet unmet demands for community-managed or not-for-profit kindergarten services, because the construction costs of the new kindergarten are covered by the Department of Education. Unlike what was previously stated by the mayor, specifically, this new kindergarten project in Thornbury is providing 99 additional kindergarten places in an area that has been identified as needing more kindergartens. It is a desert area, as she called it, and it was stated in the officer's report last month as being an area of need. Therefore, council should be helping provide approximately 99 local families this opportunity by overseeing the kindergarten programme delivered from the new facility, which should also allow for greater leverage to influence practice and standards in areas such as quality, inclusion, cultural safety and sustainability. This would also ensure that we were recognised in the sector as committing to support community-managed and not-for-profit services. However, like I said last month, I do understand that, given the state of our financial situation, this may not be possible. But I really believe that we should be embracing these opportunities and considering them on a case-by-case basis when they do apply, because they do have huge community benefits.
Thank you, councillor Demetriades. Do we have further speakers to the item? Councillor Reddy, did you want to use your right to speak a second?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's clear to me through this debate that we all agree on something, and that is the enormous benefit that we get in our community from having quality, accessible kindergarten places. What we disagree on is whether council should be a third party in a situation where we're really talking about duplication and double-handling of lease arrangements. There is no reason why the state government can't enter into a very viable and quality-driven agreement with a community-based childcare group or a not-for-profit group. It is incorrect to suggest that this is about community-based kinder. The Department of Education is equally capable and interested in finding those not-for-profit and community providers who might like to run this kinder. And I have every confidence that the Department of Education is able to do that to a high standard and in a very efficient and effective way without the double-handling of a lease to us followed by another lease. In fact, I can't think of any scenario in which double-handling of leases by having one lease and then a sub-leasee is actually a useful model. What this is, is an enormous cost shift to council. And as much as we all like kinder, and kinder is absolutely an essential service, there are other ways in which council will become involved, and those are highlighted particularly in point number five of the motion in front of us, which notes that regardless of how this project is delivered, and it's a fantastic project, that council support will be there in the form of the kindergarten registration system, professional development, networking opportunities, the resources van and the cold early years outreach and preschool field officer programmes. And so nothing in the way this lease is handled actually stops these vital services from being delivered and the partnership with council being absolutely strong, making sure that kids who need kinder get access to high-quality kinder in our community.
Thank you, councillor Reddy. I'll close off the debate by saying I will be supporting this motion. There seems to be a sense within the debate here and the last one that this is something about whether council supports community-run centres. Of course we do. But we can see here very clearly in the motion that what will happen is that... Let me just find it. Number four, notes that if council chooses not to lease the facility, the Department of Education will run an expression of interest process to directly lease the facility to a not-for-profit early years service provider. That's not up for debate, that is what is on the screen. This is not a debate about community-run council centres. This is about a debate about whether council wants to be a middleman through that process and $1.25 million to our spending over 20 years. For me, I don't think that's a good idea. There was also debate in the last debate on this about what council's values are. We're going through the process of looking at a family's youth and children's strategy right now. What are the values? I think it's that no child should be left behind. And what does that mean in Darabin? Yes, we have 18 community-run centres, but we also have wonderful not-for-profit centres, and we have wonderful private centres as well. And if every child is going to have the care that they need in Darabin, that's going to be a suite of all of those services. And I don't think it's appropriate for councillors to continually show disdain for other centres that are not community-run. I don't think it's acceptable. And councillors, I will end the vote, end the debate there. And if there's no further debate, I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour. That's councillor Reddy, councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, councillor Nushin, councillor Messina, councillor Williams, councillor Hannan. All those against, councillor Demetriades and councillor Greco. Is that everyone? Yes, that motion is passed, so we'll go on to 5.4. And we're just pausing to bring in Vanessa. Thank you. So we'll go on to 5.4, the draft electoral advertising signage and electioneering policy. We have an amended officer recommendation for this item. Councillors, do we have any questions for our officers on this item? Councillor Lawrence?
Hi. I'm just asking a question through offices. I know it was raised in briefings by another councillor. Specifically, just asking about whether we've got a fairness or equity between a parked car with advertising, whether that's in a private or a public car park, and a parked bike in a private or a public bike allocation stand, whatever that is.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Officers, who's taking that one? Yes, over to you.
Through you, Mayor. Under the current local law, yes, a car with an attached election signage parked on council land will be deemed as an election sign. I think it's important though that each case will be considered individually individually on its own merits, and the council will enforce the law fairly and reasonably. Authorized officers can take enforcement actions, but will first allow for the signs to be moved or removed.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. And Vanessa, would you like to add to that?
If I may, add to my colleague's advice, councillor Lawrence, thank you. So if a bike or a car has signage attached to it, when they stop moving and they are stationary, they're both treated the same. You will see in the draft policy that if a car has wraparound signage actually printed on it, that as long as it's legally parked, that is permissible. But if it has a sign attached to it, it's treated the same, whether it's a bike or a car.
Councillor Lawrence, do you have any further questions?
Yes, through the mayor.
Go ahead.
Just try and understand the practicalities of this stuff, right? Because people just put their sign on their car and they just leave it, right? So if they park in part of Claridan Street Car Park or part of Northcote Plaza Street Car Park, which is actually owned by the council, or if they park in a bus stop in Reservoir, which is actually leased from the council, but is actually owned by the state government, I mean, I don't know how this is all going to be applied.
And I think there's some cars that have been at Northcote Plaza for quite a long time. Vanessa, would you like to take that one?
Thank you for your question, councillor Lawrence. So generally, how these are operationalised is usually we will find... The customer will approach the council and may raise a concern, potentially, you know, could be a car with a large sign attached to it. And so officers will go out and inspect. Generally, officers will seek to educate the customer first and assist them to understand their obligations.
Thank you, Vanessa. Is that everything, councillor Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Demetriades.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry to interject, but I don't know if anybody else. It's very faint. We can hardly hear the chamber. I can't hear the chamber. So I'm just wondering if the microphones are being used. I have circulated some SMSs to say that the sound is very low.
Thank you, councillor Messina. We'll speak up, and we'll check with IT if there's anything we can do about sound in the room. But for now, please just speak very directly and clearly to your microphones. Thank you, councillor Messina.
Yes, I had a question in regards to an incident that occurred at the last election where some of the councillors, actually candidates, had advertised on a bike and then put it against a council building for long periods of time. Whether that incident, or that scenario, has been addressed in this policy? And if so, how?
Thank you, Vanessa. Would you like to take that one?
Thank you for your question, councillor Demetriades. So the policy combined with the local law, under that circumstance where a bike with signage on it is stationary on council land, that would be deemed an advertising sign, an election sign. So councillor, under that scenario, similar to response to councillor Lawrence, if it comes to our attention from the community or if officers are doing proactive rounds and see that, they will generally, in the first instance, they will seek to understand who owns the bike and to educate the owner of that bike, what their obligations are under the local law.
Thank you. Do you have further questions, councillor Demetriades?
Yes, I just wanted to know whether that particular clause in this policy has just been added, or has it been in there from previously?
Thank you. Yes, do you want to take that one?
Through you, Mayor. So the bike aspect, the bike rack aspect, has been recently added into the policy.
Thank you. Have you got further questions? No. Any further questions on this item before we go to debate? No. Okay, councillors, I'll move... Sorry. Councillors, can you hear me online?
All I hear is whispering. I'm sorry.
Councillor Messina, I'm getting nods from councillor Hannan and councillor Williams, so it might be on your end.
Okay, I'll exit and come back in.
Thank you. We'll just pause for you to do that. Audience members, we're just waiting for councillor Messina to rejoin the meeting. Thank you. Councillor Messina, is that any better on your end?
Much better, thank you, Mayor.
Excellent, thank you. We've just paused. So we'll go back to... I was just about to commence the debate. So do we have a mover for the amended officer's recommendation? Councillor McCarthy and councillor Hannan, would you like to second the motion? Great. Councillor McCarthy, I'll go to you as mover.
Thank... Sorry. Thank you. In the interest of time, I think it's pretty straightforward. The officers have undertaken a review of the electoral signage and electioneering policy. And as councillors would see, there have been some changes proposed. They are outlined, as councillors would see. Um, they are outlined as, as councillors would see in track changes. So it is really clear what those changes are. And I think, um, all councillors hopefully have read them and would see the changes that are proposed. Um, Mayor, I would just also outline that, um, uh, that this is a process that council undertakes and is required to undertake prior to every council election. I think it is worth noting, and I'm not standing for reelection, so I don't feel any sense of conflict myself, but I think it is worth noting that, um, it is a strange thing that council or council laws are setting the rules of engagement effectively, um, when it comes to this. Um, so I think we need to be really cautious about actually interfering with, um, this policy when it's been undertaken through an objective process by our officers, um, based on, uh, an assessment of the evidence and also an assessment of good process and practice. Um, and so I don't, I ask councillors just to support the recommendation as listed by the officers, and I thank them for their work in this regard.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Uh, councillor McCarthy, and we'll go to councillor Hanan as second up.
I'll reserve my right next to Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence, go ahead.
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor Newton. Um, yes, I'd also like to thank the officers for going through this and trying to sort out the sense. I'm not trying to be a devil's advocate, but I'm just understanding the confused infrastructure that is the legacy infrastructure of this city. And having been through a lockdown, stage four lockdown election last time, I'm pretty confident no laws will apply in Reservoir or Bundura again. Because I remember, um, supplying officers and a certain police station, I won't mention it, with, um, people putting up signs on a public state government school, um, in lockdown, um, which then forced the principal, who happened to remember my children, which was good, um, to have to go there and remove them. And their response was, well, unless we catch someone, really doesn't matter about stage four lockdown. So anyway, that's our life in Reservoir, it's a bit different to elsewhere. But I am aware of the bicycle wars up and down High Street. And I appreciate that this is, um, you know, there's different advantages for different people. Um, and there's people using their private cars and all that sort of stuff. So we've got to have rules. These are being set by the officers. I'm accepting them. Please, candidates, just, you know, try and read them.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. And do we have further speakers to the item? Oh, okay, councillor. Hanan, I'll go back to you a second, would you like to speak?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I'll just briefly add my thanks to the officers, um, for writing this report and updating the policy. Um, I, I also just want to pay credit to the hardworking, uh, enforcement officers and the high level of integrity and professionalism that we have here at Darabban Council. Um, the council election period is one of the most sensitive and high-pressure periods in the life of the local government. Um, and we really rely on our enforcement team. Um, and they do this not because they love going around inspecting people's signs, but because, um, you know, council wants and we want to keep a fair environment for all candidates and, and make sure there's a safe and respectful, uh, period for our community. Um, and the most important thing is clarity. We just want to make sure that it's very clear and some of the, um, rules have been updated just to make them clear from last time. The worst thing would be to have allegations of impartiality. God forbid, legal actions and a media story, as we've regrettably seen in the past. Uh, what we do want is the same rules to apply to everyone. It's early days, but we can see there's been some irregular, um, signage already going up. And I think, um, the earlier we get this policy up and agreed, take ourselves as councillors out of the process and, and just hand it over to our highly professional and, uh, highly, um, transparent, uh, management and enforcement staff, the better. So I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hanan. Um, we'll close the debate there, but I just really want to echo your words to thank Yash and the team for all your work. Um, I know exactly how hard it is to be one of those frontline workers and we really value you as a council and as a community. So we will close the debate there and we'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. So we'll go on to 5.5, the outdoor dining and trading policy fee implementation. Um, councillors, do we have officers in the room for this item or are we bringing them in? Great. Uh, councillors, do we have questions on the outdoor dining and trading policy? And noting there is an amended officer recommendation for this item. Great. I'll just wait for Valley, the manager of this area, to come into the room. Great. Um, look, just for me, I think a general question, could we just get a question, a question of clarification about what the amended officer's recommendation would mean? Thank you. I'll just go back to, um, Emma and Valley. I don't know if you guys or Kylie want to take this one, but it would just be good to get clarification about what the amended officer's recommendation means.
Uh, yes, so we've made an amendment to the officer recommendation to acknowledge that we've had ongoing communication with the businesses that have had a parklet through the state government outdoor activation programme in place for two years now. And therefore the amendment is in acknowledgement of the communication that's happened to date with the businesses that have had a existing parklet and the ones that choose to go forward with the council, um, policy.
Thanks, Emma. Have we got any further questions or are we ready to go to debate? I think I'm not seeing any hands. Have we got a mover of this item? Councillor Greco, are you moving the officers?
A question, if I may, sorry.
Yes, you may, just in time.
Just in relation to the amended recommendation. I understand that that's come from officers, is through you, Mayor, is that?
Yes, it's an amended officer recommendation, but.
Yeah, and I, I just want to understand the, the, the difference in the financial impact between what was originally suggested by officers and what is now recommended by officers.
Yes, that's fine. Um, Emma or Valley, or Kylie, would you like to take that? Emma?
Uh, yes, through you, Mayor Newton. So the difference in the fee structure, um, is, uh, partial implementation for an interim year between the experience that parklet owners have, um, uh, received, uh, in the past through the state government programme and what the policy, uh, fee structure had recommended. The interim arrangement will be putting in place the $2.50 per day per parking space, which is the fee structure that the parklet hosts from the state government programme have been used to since September 2022, when council resolved to put that fee in place. In terms of the overarching outdoor dining, uh, fee structure, the intention for the interim year is to maintain those fees at the current level, um, that was a part of the 2023, 2024 fee structure for outdoor dining. Over the course of the implementation rollout for this current year, we will be moving through an understanding of the application of the percentage of average retail, uh, rates and therefore be able to provide businesses with a clearer understanding about how the new policy, um, in terms of the fee structure will affect them as individual businesses across the municipality.
Thank you very much. Councillor Greco, have you got further questions?
Look, I, I thank through you the officers, um, for the response. Uh, maybe I wasn't clear enough in my question. What I was trying to understand is, um, what the financial benefit would be as a result of the, uh, the new recommendation that's been put forward by officers. I mean, how much money does that return to the council?
Thank you. Uh, Vanessa, do you want to take that one?
Thanks for your question, councillor Greco. So, um, by continuing the current fee structure for a year, we would anticipate, um, there'll be no, um, financial impact on council. And when this, when the policy was tabled and, um, considered by council in March, the advice was regarding the financial impact, it will depend on the uptake of traders choosing to trade. But for this current financial year with our recommendation, um, we don't project any, um, impact on the budget overall.
Thank you, Vanessa. And I'll, I'll add, I'll go to Peter to add.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. I don't think we answered the question again. Um, what, I think the question was, what's the difference between the printed recommendation and the amended one? The difference is, it's the extra rev, so instead of waiving fees for parklets, it's the additional money we'll collect at $2.50 per day per parklet. I think there's probably about 15 parklets. Um, it's not significant extra money we'll collect. Uh, councillor Greco, we can take the exact figure unnoticed for you, but it's not a significant amount if you work on 15 parklets. If they all continue at $2.50 a day, I can't do the mental maths at this time of night, but it's not significant.
Thank you. Valley, did you want to add to this?
Yes, absolutely, so through you, Mayor. It's likely there'll be an additional, up to $20,000 of income from these fees. But that is dependent on the amount of parklet applications we receive.
Thank you. Councillor Greco, did you have further questions? Okay, any, oh, councillor Lawrence, go ahead.
Um, yes, through you, Mayor, not just to the officers, I've got a very specific question in relation to the 15 parklets. Does this include any parklet in Gert's Avenue Shopping Centre in slash North Reservoir slash Keown Park, whatever you want to call it?
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Um, Emma or Valley, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Um, the current situation with all parklets, uh, in situ up until tomorrow is that all the parklets that have been put in place through the state government outdoor activation fund are being removed by council, um, excepting for some of the assets that belong to different businesses. We have got at this point in time four businesses that had previously had parklets through the state government programme, um, going through the journey of putting in applications to council to continue a parklet for their business, uh, going forward under the state government programme. Therefore, all the individual businesses, including the, um, parklets at Gert's Avenue, um, will be transitioning at this point in time from being state government parklet to a Darabban City Council, um, parklet. We don't have any, uh, current applications from anyone from Gert's Avenue, um, in the application pipeline.
Thank you, Emma. Councillor Lawrence, have you got further questions? Okay. Councillor Messina, did you have questions?
Yeah, sorry, sometimes my hand goes up and you probably, um, haven't seen it.
Sorry about that.
I just want to discuss, um, can we go back to what the officer just said? And I, I please appreciate that the sound is very minimal where I'm hearing it. Um, was the Gert's, was not the Gert's Avenue part of the, um, implementation and the funding that Darabban Council put in place back during, um, the COVID period? From my understanding, that's what it was about. That's.
Thank you, councillor Messina. Yeah, so look, I think it's a, a question of clarification about whether council funded anything or whether it was, uh, the state government funding.
Uh, through you, Mayor. So the Gert's Avenue parklet was a part of the state government outdoor activation fund parklet. The materials that were used as part of that parklet are now form part of the parklet removal programme, um, as agreed, um, through council resolution to remove those parklets due to compliance, uh, and safety checks that were undertaken in 2023, um, related to the materials used by those, um, at that stage in terms of the parklet, uh, implementation. The parklets that were built through that programme were never intended to, um, be, um, able to last for a significant period of time. And therefore, um, most of the materials used either don't comply with the new policy that council has adopted in terms of safety, uh, and in terms of, um, ability for those materials to, um, continue into the new parklet programme. Um, so those parklets are being removed and the businesses, including Gert's Avenue, have the opportunity of engaging with this new policy and guidelines to understand what they can put in place, um, to, to go forward with their own, um, new permit that, uh, abides by council's, um, policy and guidelines.
Thank you, Emma. Councillors, any of you have further questions?
I have, thank you. And for the purpose of the gathering, people listening in, is there a, a transit period before the removal of the ones in place and then the implementation of the new? Is there a gap for that particular establishment? And has that, have those establishments been informed whether, in writing, that this is what council is currently considering, please?
Thank you. Emma, did you want to take that one?
Yes, uh, through you, Mayor. Um, thank you for your question, councillor, um, Messina. The, um, current parklet hosts, the final, um, parklet removal programme is concluding, I believe, tomorrow or the next day. The com- communication that we've had with those existing parklet owners, hosts, um, the last communication that we had with them holistically was after the council resolution to imply the policy and guidelines to inform them that, uh, the new, uh, policy and guidelines were in place and the businesses should engage with that. Some parklets removed their, uh, parklets in February of this year and the second lot, um, are currently going to be concluded tomorrow. So the pub, parklets owners have been communicated that there was a grace period in terms of permit fees not being applied from the first of April until the end of June as per council resolution, um, to allow them to have the time to engage with the new policy and guidelines and to submit their new, uh, permit applications to officers.
Thank you, Emma. Councillor Messina?
Yeah, I'd like to foreshadow an amendment, um, should this not go through and to ensure that there's no, no, um, uh, amendment, uh, that there's no period where no traders are left in transit and limbo where there's one that's been removed and a new one implemented and that there is time for them to consider. I haven't got the wording, but I just want to make sure that there is no gap for the trader. So if we have to adjourn, I'm happy to adjourn, Mayor.
I'll just go to Peter.
Uh, through you, Mayor. So this report is about the fees. I believe in March, council already, um, implemented, uh, sorry, in, in March, council already approved the policy and the transition arrangements. So if you were to move an amendment, I wouldn't need to adjourn to check. You're not trying to amend something that you've already decided council will do. So, um, I'm happy to try and contact you privately about that, councillor Messina, but, or, or we'd need an adjournment to see what amendment you would need to make. Perhaps you could email that through and then I can advise the Mayor.
Thank you, um, Peter, sorry. Um, I'm satisfied that there is no, there's no transit period where the host will be without an outdoor facility, um, outdoor parklet should they want one, based on what you've just stated, Peter. So I'm happy to, to continue. If not, I will be bringing an urgent motion to council the next council meeting.
Thank, thank you, councillor Messina.
Based on what you've just stated, thank you.
Thank you. Look, I think, I think that sounds like a really good way forward. I think let's take it offline and we'll, we'll come back to you, councillor Messina. Um, have we got any last questions before we go to debate? No. Okay, councillors, we've got an amended officer recommendation. Are you moving the amended officer recommendation? Yep, thank you, councillor Rennie and councillor McCarthy, to second. Councillor Rennie, please go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the staff for their work on this. Obviously, we anticipate in the future having a different fee structure, which would, um, charge for space occupied rather than for individual things placed on the footpath. We weren't in a position to implement this, um, in a timely way this year because it didn't go out, uh, through the budget consultation process. And so a similar, um, fee structure is recommended to what we've had in place in the past, um, noting that fees are something that councillors endorse through this process. Um, I think it's appropriate now that there be a very small charge for parklet permits. $2.50 a day is half the cost of a coffee, of one coffee at a parklet. Where hopefully our cafes will thrive and be selling hundreds every day. Um, I suspect we're also one of the last councils in Melbourne not charging for parklets. So I think that's timely and, um, obviously competing with other land uses. So, um, having outdoor dining and trading is an amazing thing in our municipality. It brings our streets to life. It's a really positive thing. But obviously, i- it could also result in some privatisation of public land. And that's why it's really important that we're transparent with our community about the fees associated with this. Um, and that people know that, um, business operators can't just take over council land, that there is a process and a charge for doing that. And I commend this to everyone, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. And yes, I think there have been some more challenging situations at Burundara Council. at Burundara council in this regard particularly. I'll go on to councillor, was it McCarthy who was the second?
I'll reserve my right, Mayor.
Councillor Lawrence, did you want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Newton. Yeah, I'd just like to speak. Actually, I think I'm speaking against the motion. I thank officers for their work on this and I thank officers for the additional information at this point in time. This seems like a very small tidy up and, you know, as, you know, I think the only council voted for nearly every recommended cut to the budget and it never got there, most of them. You know, I don't want to, you know, damage my reputation as part of the razor gang, even if there's only one of us. But I think $20,000 here should be absorbed by the council. And the reasons for that, to really understand the historical impact of the lockdown laws on the hospitality sector. And unfortunately, you know, as I mentioned to some people, you know, they don't even, anyway. Decision makers at state government don't circulate enough and don't understand the structural damage done in the northern suburbs because of the actual economy built on food and hospitality by migrants mainly, who have predominantly suffered from the actual effects of the virus and the actual effects of lockdown. And if you want to know why people are dissatisfied, if you want to know why there's 14% swings, that's why. So I'm, this is part of the aftermath of this. This is a part of the aftermath affecting people. I know it won't affect High Street Westgarth, but it's going to affect every marginal area up because they're not going to get those extra customers there. They don't get the funding. We don't have a festival, 24-hour festival celebrating in Gert's Avenue from the state government. We don't have federal subsidies there. We have three businesses, four, really having a go and bringing us world-class gelati, which is better than anywhere in Melbourne.
It's time, Councillor Lawrence, just wrap up.
Yeah, unfortunately, we should be helping pedestrianise and even subsidise that.
Thank you, Councillor Lawrence. And there was a 19.2% swing in the last state election. And are there any further speakers? I see. And are there further speakers on this item? Councillor Messina?
This initiative began way before anybody actually put it in place. Darabin was the first council to address and implement outdoor parklets. It took us a while to get them out there, but it was an urgent motion back in June during 2020. And I remember at the time, I had to fight to get it to be an urgent motion. But we put it through and council supported it. And council, this Darabin council has given $12.5 million to the community when it came to lockdowns and during that particular period. And we were the second, only the city of Melbourne to do so. I've heard lots of debate in the community. I've been, just like everybody else, I've been paving the pavement in terms of those that want parklets, that those don't want. There are some that want it, but unfortunately, due to their geographic location, can't have them there because of occupational health and safety risks. Do we want to charge $2.50 a day? I don't think a coffee is going to make such a great impact on a particular trader or not. So I'm going to be supporting this motion. I probably shouldn't. It's not about money because this is about putting a process in place that's going to have a compounding effect moving forward. It's not about $2.50. It's about getting the policy right, getting rules and regulations and so that everybody is aware of what's happening there. I know what's happening at Gert's Avenue because I pounded the pavement and spoke to both of them. And I helped and spoke to them about what Darabin was initiating. Moving forward, we need to have policies in place. We need to have a fee structure. But there are those that cannot and those that want. And I think we need to be fair and equitable to all of the community. And I look forward to more of these. I want more of these. Community want more of these and traders want more of these. It's about having the parameters right and moving forward and saying, let's put them in. So I'll be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Councillor Messina. And I really echo the words of support for the traders in Gert's Avenue. They do a really wonderful job up there in the north of Darabin. Have we got further speakers to this item? Councillor Williams, go ahead.
Just quickly, I just wanted to add to Councillor Messina. The whole point of this is to ensure that we do have the policy, we have it correct, we have it right. There's a number of businesses that have, I guess, hashed their little parklets and how they've gone about it in case we need to ensure that OHNS and that we are protecting the public, that there's enough space for walkers, prams, people on scooters. There's enough space for that walking space also, that we ensure that there's cables that have been, I guess, extension leads that have been going from the building to the parklets. We want to make sure that those cables are actually under a policy, under a process. That's why we're going back to the border. Sorry, we're going back to basics, getting the foundation right. And hopefully, that going forward, that we'll have a lot more parklets in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Williams. Any further speakers? Okay, I'll go back to Councillor McCarthy. You are the second. Do you want to speak at this point or you're fine?
I think it's all been covered, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Rennie, would you like to use your right of reply? There was one speaker against.
No, thanks, Mayor. I think we can put it to the vote.
Thank you. Okay, councillors, if there's no further debate, I will put the item to the vote. All those in favour. It's carried unanimously, oh, sorry, councillor Twitchardis, councillor Rennie, councillor Greco, councillor McCarthy, councillor Williams, councillor Messina, councillor Hannon, councillor Newton, all those against. Councillor Lawrence, that motion has passed. So we will now go to 5.6. This is property matters, sale of minor assets, six Tasman Street and six Bischoff Street in Preston. Sorry if I got that pronunciation wrong. Councillors, we're on 5.6, property matters, sale of minor assets. Have we got any questions on the item? Okay, do we have a mover of the motion? Councillor Williams, and do we have a second? Councillor Messina, councillor Williams, would you like to speak to the item?
The agenda item is to commence the statutory process that, under the section of 114 of the Local Government Act, to sell the discontinued land adjoining the two properties of Tasman and Bischoff Street in Preston to the owners by private treaty in accordance with the council sale of minor assets policy. Council is obligated to give notice of its intention to sell any parcels of land. And by giving notice, we must stipulate that on the council website and also to publish it in the notice of the Victoria Government Gazette in accordance to the section there of 206 of the Local Government Act. Council has a number of these minor assets around Darabin. And bit by bit, we have been selling off those parcels of land. And this particular one will be sold off between the private treaty that are joined, those landowners. So I just wanted to note that council has not received any objections to date. And also that we delegate the responsibilities to authorise the CEO to sign any other documentations relating to the sale of the land to complete the statutory process. So pretty straightforward.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Councillor Messina, would you like to speak to the item?
No, for the purpose of timing, I'm happy with what the board has stated.
Great, thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Newton. Just briefly through this. It is worth mentioning in this range, this is potentially privatisation of land. It was, the land, these lanes mainly were for servicing, servicing for outdoor toilets and various things and drainage purposes in old times. I would note through reservoir area, and we've got some reservoir area there with Tyler Street in that item or the next item, the actual land was private and was actually donated back to the council. A bit like Ralph Street Car Park was donated by private owners to the council. So this is a bit of a merry-go-round where we're selling it back. For many years, we were just giving it away to residents and only charging for the lawyers' fees, which were substantial. They still are substantial. But now we're going and collecting some kind of notional money from those. So it won't save the budget. And luckily, we gave away most of the lanes freely previously. I'll just note the history of the ownership of these things.
Thank you, Councillor Lawrence. Have we got any further speakers to the item? No, I'm going to put this to the vote. All those in favour. That is carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. We'll move on quickly to 5.7. This is another property matters item, sale of minor assets at 252 and 254 Tyler Street, Preston. Have we got any questions for the officers? No questions. Do we have a mover of the motion? Councillor Williams, you're moving the officer's recommendation. Great. And I have a second to councillor Greco. Councillor Williams, please go ahead. Councillor Williams, you're on mute. If we could just restart the clock, please.
To imply that it's exactly the same as our previous agenda item, that it's a straightforward process. But we do have an obligation that we must stipulate that it's under the section of 114 of the Local Government Act, that any adjoining properties that we must give notice. And it must give notice under the council sale of minor assets and policy and including to give public notification via the Victoria Government Gazette in accordance to that section. In reference to the parcels of land, they will be sold by private treaty to the adjoining landowners. And once again, we have not received any objections. And we will give the responsibilities to the CEO to sign any further documentation. In reference to the cost of the land, our officers do spend a fair bit of time ensuring and communicating and that they get this right, that the adjoining landowners actually get what they want and what they can afford. So there is a cost involved because of all the hours that our officers have to put together, including that there does involve title changes and those things are not free also. So it's not like that council is winning a whole lot out of this. It's actually council officers spending a lot of hours engaging with those adjoining properties, obviously giving those public notifications in the Gazette. So, yeah, it's not really free land. It's officers' time that we put together. And thank you to our officers who spend a lot of time doing this.
Thank you, councillor Williams. You're getting some nods from officers in the room. And with the second, with councillor Greco, would you like to speak?
Nothing further to add.
Sure. Any further speakers? No. Okay, we'll put that one to the vote for Tyler Street. All those in favour. That's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. And we'll go to 5.8. This is property matters, sale of minor assets, 182 to 184 High Street and 1 Butler Street, Northkirk. Have we got any questions? No. Okay, we'll go straight to the motion. Would anyone like to move the motion? Councillor Hannon, and do I have a second, councillor Rennie? Councillor Hannon, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This is similar to the properties that we've just had in the last couple of items. This is a location in Northkirk, just sort of at the back of a couple of High Street commercial properties. And going back a few years, council resolved to discontinue a laneway there that wasn't being used. And it was partially bought, but there was a piece of land remaining, which was not sold and has been remaining with council. The piece of land itself, it's really, it's not being currently used and it would be much better put to use by someone. And I understand that the adjoining property, residential house, has expressed interest in taking possession of that land and being prepared to pay the appropriate fees. So this is, just to kick off that process again and be very public and transparent about it and to put it out to public notice that that's what council intends to do. So I think this makes a lot of sense and I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hannon. Councillor Rennie, would you like to add anything? Nothing to add. Any further speakers? No, we'll put this to the vote as well. All those in favour. That's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. And we'll go on to urgent business. Are there any items of urgent business? No. Okay, so we'll go back to Wingrove Street. Councillor McCarthy, would you like to leave the meeting and we'll call you back in when we're ready? I'll just wait for councillor McCarthy to leave. Okay, so we're now back on 5.1. This is expression of interest submissions received on building 1D and the hothouse at 2 Wingrove Street, Alphington. Have we got any questions on the item? Last chance, any questions? No. Okay, we'll go to, oh, just noting, we've got an amended officer recommendation. So would anyone like to move that amended officer recommendation or anything else? Councillor Rennie to move. And councillor Hannon, would you like to second? Thank you. Sorry, so your hand first. Councillor Rennie, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank our staff for the work that's gone in trying to find a suitable outcome which enables people to continue using this block of land that we acknowledge will eventually in the future be subject to significant master planning activity. But in the meantime, we're very keen to make sure this land does not sit unused. I'd also like to thank all of the community members who have participated in the expression of interest and acknowledge how difficult this process has been for people who have been operating their organisations or businesses from the land to Wingrove Street over, in many cases, a number of years. When it comes to public land, council has a responsibility to ensure that the public benefit from the land is maximised. And holding an expression of interest process was the best way of achieving this. It enables everyone who might have an idea of how to maximise community benefit from that land to put that idea forward. We advertised the expression of interest over a number of weeks and had a number of submissions, which was really positive. And it's always, I think, a good sign when you actually have more submissions than you are able to accommodate. It says that people have found out about the process and that there is robust interest. And so there is now a process of negotiation because the people who have put in EORs have been assessed in terms of how highly they rank against each of the criteria that were outlined. And a recommendation has been put forward and has been made to us as councillors. Those businesses will now have to choose whether they take up the offer. And in particular, in some instances, that involves planning permit permissions. So until such time as we have established whether they actually want to go through that process of getting a planning permit, we're not tonight going to say who's been successful or not, but there has been a process. And I think that process has been robust and I commend it to all councillors. I think that it's incumbent upon us to follow the advice of our staff who spend significant time and bring a lot of expertise to the process of assessing applications such as these. Once again, I thank everyone who's put in an expression of interest. I know that such things take a lot of time and I also acknowledge the challenges for many people in change in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. And just to remind that because we are still in the middle of the process, I will just request that councillors don't use the name of applicants during debate. Councillor Hannon, would you like to speak to the item as second?
I'll reserve my right. Thanks, Mayor.
Sure. Councillor Lawrence, would you like to speak?
Yes, Mayor Newton, thank you. For this, I'm happy to speak in favour of this motion. Obviously, the history of this site. Um, obviously the history of this site was a previous, um, uh, council depot, an electricity, um, provider. Actually, this was part of City of Heidelberg many years ago and, um, and ended up part of Northkirk and ended up part of Darabin. And, uh, one of the most successful, I think I'd say the most successful, uh, business incubator in Australia, certainly in Victoria, was established there, um, at a period of very high unemployment and worked on a, a model, uh, that was successfully managed there of incubating and fostering businesses and then those businesses transferring out. Now, I watched a number of those businesses. Some of them went north, a lot of them went south, other, you know, were, were lifestyle or property related or, you know, expensive things. And they established businesses either in Darabin or Yarra. Um, so there's a long hi- history there of success. Um, the, you know, circumstance that we're now dealing with is the legacy issues after that model probably, you know, drifted off into a different direction, both obviously in terms of responses to the digital economy and other things. And so we're now that it's served a great public utility in terms of addressing jobs in the area, we're now looking at what is its future and there's funding put into the budget for master planning. And there are, uh, legacy buildings there that are obviously legacies for us that we've inherited, health and safety wise, because we inherit assets from amalgamations, but we also inherit liabilities. So we're dealing with those and, um, this is emerging out and it's being done under the delegation of officers and I'm very happy that we're moving forward.
Thank you, Council Lawrence. Have we got further speakers to this item? Council Dimitriatis.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I'll be abstaining, um, on this item and that's as a point of principle because the overall transparency around this, uh, decision-making site has been a concern for many residents, um, over time. And as we know, this site has had particular interest from the public. We've seen petitions being brought to council and many questions from the public and concerns regarding decisions, um, which is why initially at the last council meeting, I raised a motion to ensure that the future decisions regarding two Wingrove Street were, uh, made by council and not under delegations. Um, but unfortunately, this motion was voted down last month. And, um, here we're making a decision at a special meeting, uh, which doesn't allow the community to come and ask questions or to make submissions about it, despite the large community interest in this matter. Um, and that's a procedural matter that's been decided on. Um, and while I sincerely congratulate all the organisations who will be offered a licence for this use of the site, I believe there should be more transparency in making these decisions and, um, community members should be allowed to make public submissions and ask questions if they wish on these, on these topics. So I'm actually a little bit disappointed that the matter's been brought to a special meeting rather than an official council meeting. So I'll be abstaining. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Dimitriatis. Uh, just to clarify, the motion was supported about bringing these decisions into council?
Oh, um, so, sorry, Mayor, it was actually amended. So, um, the motion was actually amended, though I actually put up to remove the delegated authority and it was amended last month by councillor, um, Hannon.
But the motion was supported?
Well, that, it wasn't voted on because we put in amendment, which in my opinion was against the govern- their intention of the norm.
Thank you, Council Dimitriatis. To clarify, so the motion overall, the substantive motion was supported?
Um, well, it depends how you look at it. It's not the actual, um, I'm, I'm not sure why you're asking me. It's in the agenda, so you could technically just read it, last month's agenda.
I'm very clear that the motion was supported. Thank you, Council Dimitriatis. So do we have any further speakers on the item? Council Hannon and then I'll go to Council Masena.
Oh, sorry, Mayor, maybe you should go to Council Masena first, I was the second.
Okay, sorry, I'll go to Council Masena, um, and then I'll go back to you, Council Hannon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you to the officers. I know this longstanding issue in relation to this particular piece of land. Um, Darabin City Council has supported the incubator hub for many, 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 many decades. And, um, it was set up as a centre or, or area where we foster new businesses for short periods of time and then they move on to an- another area. So it was an incubation hub to get new businesses started, formulated. It was not for a long-term, um, um, proprietor to be there for a long period of time. That was the initial setup of this particular area that was funded by Darabin City Council for many, many decades. Um, just in relation to some of the innuendos, um, I, I think we need to, we are, we have been fair and transparent, so I have to disagree with what some of our councillors have stated. I think we have been fair, we have been open up in terms of obtaining some interest for the particular area and I look forward to those that have put up their hand and look forward to their thriving businesses, not only now, but go- going into the future. So I look forward to being a, a consumer of the products, a consumer, um, walking down there. Um, so I look forward to the evolution of this particular site.
Great, thank you, Council Masena. Council Hannon, would you like to speak as second?
Uh, actually, in the interest of time, I'll, I'll, I'll let it go. Thank you, I, I agree with points raised just now by Council Masena. Thank you.
Sure. Council Greco, would you like to speak?
Look, thank you, uh, Mayor Newton. Look, I'll be supporting this motion because I think it's, um, time that, um, um, the, this issue is brought to a conclusion. And, um, and, and I understand that we have gone through the expression of interest. Um, many groups or organisations have put forward, um, their propositions and officers have gone through a selection process in ranking, um, the, the various contenders in relation to the expression of interest. So I'll be supporting the motion in relation to that. Um, but having said that, I, I express, I also have concerns about the, um, the, um, um, that, that this particular item should not have been brought to a special meeting because of the, the nature of the rules governing special meetings where special meetings, members of the community can't ask questions and also cannot make, um, um, submissions in relation to, to items. Given that there, as councillor, uh, Dimitriatis has said, given that there's been a lot of, um, uh, community discussion and, um, interest in this particular matter, I would have thought it would have been better for it to come to a, a normal, ordinary council meeting where then we could have given opportunity for members of the community, um, to have their say. One of the issues that we constantly get marked down on and that we all recognise is consultation with the, with our community and also building that level of trust with the community. Unfortunately, our rules this time tangle us up because it does not give that opportunity for, uh, community members to, to have their say. But notwithstanding that, I think we've, we've landed at a good point and, um, and that we, um, uh, passed this resolution tonight. But I hope that in future we, we are, we remain very cognisant of, um, how to build community trust and how to ensure that we, um, um, o- o- offer, um, the maximum opportunities for the community to be engaged in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Greco. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Council Rennie, I'll go back to you as there was one person who wants to abstain. Uh, would you like a right of reply and then I'll close the debate?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to point out that at its essence here, we have a probity issue relating to a procurement process and that it would be quite extraordinary for councillors to intervene in an outcome which had been set up through a process of rigorous assessment and ranking of applicants. It would be akin to council having a tender come to us and councillors deciding that they know better than those who had participated in the tender process how to assess, uh, those tenders. That's not something this council has ever done. And so whilst we can talk about consultation, I think we also need to be clear that when it comes to the decision about how to award, um, outcomes in situations like, such as this, where there has been a rigorous evidence-based assessment of the applications, um, submissions from community members at this type of, um, occasion could actually be unhelpful and would be counter to good governance process. So there is absolutely nothing stopping community members coming to our next council meeting next week and asking questions about process and to the extent that the, the questions they ask are able to be answered publicly and don't relate to commercial and conference material, I would encourage community members who have questions to come next week to the council meeting and ask questions. That is something that this council has always been open to and is certainly within, um, their scope. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rennie. Um, just to close off the debate, I'll be supporting the motion. Um, and certainly over my eight years, I've seen more and more council decisions be publicised and more and more be out in the open. So I think we're always improving on that. Um, and I think that there is a reality with, because we did support the motion to, um, I suppose, remove some of the delegation from the CEO last council meeting, an ordinary meeting. Um, what that does mean is that there'll be more decisions that come to the chamber, um, which means we do have more agenda items, which means that sometimes we do need to call special meetings to make sure that we are covering everything. Um, but as Council Rennie said, there's absolutely opportunity for any resident who would like to ask questions about two Wingrove Street or anything else at the next ordinary council meeting next week. So I'll close the debate there and I'll put the item to the vote. So all those in favour? It's councillor Rennie, councillor Greco, council Lawrence, council Newton, council Williams, council Masena and council Hannon, all those against and all those abstaining. Council Dimitriatis, that motion has passed. And we now have to go, I'll just go back through the agenda. Uh, can we bring councillor McCarthy back in, please? We'll just pause to bring in councillor McCarthy. Thank you. Um, so we're now on item seven, consideration of reports considered confidential. So we very much thank the, for members of the audience that are still with us. Um, but we will, uh, require you to leave the meeting at this point um, because we have one confidential report to be considered this evening. That's the CEO performance review. So we will close the meeting to the public in accordance with section sixty-six-two of the Local Government Act twenty twenty. Council may resolve to close the meeting to members of the public to consider the items designated confidential in accordance with section three, one of the act. Councillors, do I have a mover of the recommendation to close the meeting to the public? Council McCarthy and councillor Greco at a second. I'll go straight to the vote. All those in favour? Everyone? Yep. Uh, thank you, that's carried unanimously. Um, so, yes, Peter, would you like to declare a conflict before we close the meeting?
You, Mayor, uh, Major Sella, I will declare a general conflict of interest and I will leave and I think most other officers are leaving too.
Thank you. Uh, so, thank you to the members of the community who've joined us here in the chamber and online this evening and all, you've already left. Um, and I'd like to thank you for your time this evening. And I declare the meeting closed to members of the public at eight thirty-six.